February 15, 2018. If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Plenty of Board members present tonight. Shaun Winston, alternate member. David Dowell, regular member. Nile Shore is absent tonight. The Vice Chair, Paul Bovair, is here. Regular member. Nicole Fecto, an alternate, Mike LaRue. And tonight, for voting purposes, Shaun Winston will be a regular voting member. Also have our Town Planner, Kathy here, and our Planning Technician and Water Department Billing Clerk, James here.
Is that a new title, too?
Nah.
I nailed it this time, finally. It only took me a year to nail it. Kathy, do you have a guest here, too?
I do. I'd like to introduce Abby Sherwin. She is the newest member of the S and PDC team, and she wants some Planning Board exposure.
Well, you came to the right planning board.
Yeah. Lucky you.
Public comment session is open to any resident or property owner in the town of Burwick to come forward to talk about anything under the purview of the Planning Board. Feel free to come forward. You have unlimited time. We have the -- no public hearings this evening, but we do have a few things for old business. So if you would like to make your comments now on those, or anything else that relates to the Planning Board, please feel free to come forward now or not. Public comment session's open.
I have a comment that relates to the public hearing statement you just made, in that I thought we had a public hearing tonight on the amendments for the land use ordinance. And I think I found that in the minutes.
James can speak to that.
Ah, save me.
No, it's March 1st.
Okay.
We didn't have any noticing requirements.
All right. It was in the minutes.
Yes.
So we're having two public hearings, then?
It'd be a public hearing, yep, on the land use amendments and the land use map.
Right.
Thanks, James.
Thank you.
Anybody for public comment session? Seeing nobody come forward, closed public comment session. Moving on to approval of minutes for the February 1st, 2018 meeting.
All right, James. I don't understand your filing system. Where are my minutes?
They're under tab number one.
Tab one and a half.
It all coordinates with the agenda, the numbers, tabs, and the agenda.
Thank you.
Good job, Patty.
Everybody have a copy of the minutes for the first?
I do now.
Several things.
What do you got?
All quite minor. Page one, at the bottom, it says, "Paul Bovair mentioned to amend Nile's motion, accept the minutes." I'd like to add a "to" in there so it reads as a full sentence.
And a low case "m"?
To accept, between the word "motion" and "accept."
Okay.
Next page, motion, Nile Shore motioned to adopt the minutes as presented. The word "the minutes," the words "the minutes," add those. Same page, further down, in old business, Andrea Burns, 55 School Street, said they would like to further develop their property. Ms. Burns said there are two properties that abut her property. That's very true. What we should also add is both those two properties that abut her are both in the village overlay district, overlay.
So two properties in the village overlay.
Yeah, I mean, everyone usually has two or three abutters, but the reason why they're allowed to opt in is because they abut in the village overlay.
Okay.
The next page, in paragraph that starts with a "three," Mr. Aliva requested a waiver on landscaping, citing they will be using the existing tree growth and will only cut what is needed. Mr. Aliva asked what the definition of continuous is, and I think the definition of continuous landscape buffer was the specific question. The definition of continuous, we all know what that is.
Or doing.
I think that may be it. Maybe not. Nope, it isn't. Yeah, sidewalks, Nile Shore asked if the town wants sidewalks or not sidewalks, and it said, "Public hearing is set for February 15th," which is tonight. Apparently, you've rectified that already.
Well, it was set for February 15th.
So the minutes are correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the agenda was what was -- okay, we're good. Other than that, they're perfect.
Anything else? Anybody else see anything? Any changes? It said, "Motion will be for approval of the minutes as amended."
I'll make the motion that we approve as amended.
I'll second that. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your hands. Okay? It's 4-0 with Nicole abstaining. Thank you. No public hearing scheduled for this evening. Moving on to old business, conditional use application, medical marijuana production facility, applicant paper birch property LLC, map R 70-12-1, 357 Portland Street.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Aliva. I'm with Civil Consultants here, and here to discuss the project further. We had the meeting last time. We listened to the Board's comments and requests, and in your package, you'll see a set of plans that have been revised. And in particular, we have submitted an odor control plan that we researched and submitted that addresses the requirements, or we feel addresses the requirements of the zoning ordinance and provides additional information on that odor control plan to help maintain the quality of the air coming from the facility and also give the code office the information needed and authority so that if there is a complaint, that a complaint could be handled quickly. The Board wants to start and discuss there, or do we want to kind of go through the site walk and all the -- and the issues and all the other concerns, or how would the Chairman like to proceed with the review of the information provided?
Okay.
If I could make a suggestion?
Kathy, go ahead.
I would love to hear about the site visit, since I was unable to attend, and Nicole also wasn't. It would be great if we could just have a short summary. Thank you.
I can give us -- I was at the meeting.
Hi, Paul.
Or Paul.
Yep. So David Dowell and myself attended, along with James, and the site is pretty easy to navigate. I mean, there's a foot of snow in some places, dry in others, pretty much. Jeff has, or someone at Civil Consultants, has flagged the entrance, and you can actually park your car on a little overlook area, if you want to call it, in the road right away. And you can see where the drive entering, driveway, will enter the property, and then it will turn left for the first phase of this project. To the left where the first phase has taken place is, I would call it, fairly mature pine growth with some scruffy stuff below it. And from talking to Jeff on the site walk, quite a bit of that will be cut, especially the bigger stuff. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff. We'll leave in some of the shorter understory, and this is, I would say, it's on the west side of the property, which is the back of the building. And then, when you go further into the property, there will be a -- you will actually be in someone's backyard, and then the rail tracks are more to your right, towards the back. So I guess it does not -- I was under the impression it was going to abut the rail track, but it does not.
It does not.
No. Other than that, it's pretty uneventful. It's easy to take a walk in, take a look. It does all slope back to a fairly good-sized wet area, and there is a swale that comes along the edge of the property and goes into that wetland, and I believe everything ends up in what they call Adam's Brook, which is not far in the woods there. David, can you add anything?
One note I had was --
I was going to bring that up when we get to the -- that part of it. It's just a question I had, and I've been looking on the Internet, being naive in this topic, so.
Okay. The thing I want to add to that is that shortly after you guys left, or as you were pulling away, Mike showed up at the site, and I walked Mike through the plan and showed him the building corners. What we did is we laid out the center line of where the driveway would come in and the four corners of the buildings to give an indication of where and how they would fit on the site. As Paul indicated, our intent is to, you know, cut the areas that we need to, leave areas around the perimeter, leave trees around the perimeter to create, just to keep that vegetative buffer. Once we go off our property line, you're into that next lot that is a wide-open field. There is a wetland out to the back. Our work does not encroach in that wetland at all, and that's really about it where we're at on the site walk.
Yeah, one thing I remember, now that you're talking about the site itself, the leach field is actually, a part of the leach field is on the exposed, I call it the frontage to Route 4. But I don't think the entire leach field will be on that grassy area that leads down to a swale and up to Route 4.
Correct.
Part of it will be in the woods, and you stated that you do have to remove all the trees leading to that area, and then if whatever is encroaching on the leach field will have to be removed.
Yeah, in that area that is encroaching on the leach field, and if you look at the plan, you can see how that field fits in and goes along the existing tree line and fits in that space, and how that leach field is kind of pushed away. So there still is a good chunk of existing vegetation that will be there that will shield and protect the parking area. As you look at that Section 77, I think it's 77 in the ordinance that talks about parking screen, and we'll talk about that some more, I'm sure.
We'll talk about the landscape buffer, I think we'll cover that.
Yep.
And the transformer is also there.
Yeah, there will be a transformer on that side, and there will be a cut that needs to go in through that. But I think if you look at what the -- there are, I think, along that area where the parking area would be, there, you know, there's like two or three big mature pine trees that we're going to keep, and that we'd work around to have that.
You're going to leave the understory, which right now, there's very few leaves, and it's very, it's mostly hardwood, just small brushy trees is what I would call it. That, you said you were leaving all the understory as it is.
Yeah. Yeah, the areas that were not going to be disturbed by the development are going to stay as-is.
As-is.
As-is. Yep, yeah, we want to keep as much of that natural cover around the building as possible. And if you look at, you know, our plans, we have, you know, we have a little bit of grading, but the idea here is to keep everything as it is around the perimeter, and you know, and our building is, you know, doesn't have any windows. It's got one solid, our intent is to have it be like a dark green color so it fits in there, unobtrusive, and sits on that. But the idea of vegetation clearing is only where our development's going to be.
When we have our public hearing, I would imagine that some of the abutters, there's a couple of fairly close, I consider closer, abutters to the site, and I'm sure they may have some comments on the landscaping that they're going to be looking at across their field, their open space.
Yeah, they may be, but if we look at the plan again, you look at that section where our development ends, as you get into the wetland, that's all, all that, it's a forested wetland, all that forested area is going to stay the same. There's no cutting, no disturbing, no trimming that's going to go on inside that.
On the road frontage part there, the only thing that you're disturbing is where you're going to be putting in the septic.
Really, with the septic, and then potentially where, and CMP will dictate to us where the transformer sits, but where an underground line can go. So the idea is that, you know, they're going to bring a transformer, drop that in there. Most likely, our power's going to go underline, underground to the building, because that's the most efficient way for that, so that, you know, we can move that around vegetation to keep that.
You need three-phase there.
Most likely, yep, yeah. Based on the HVAC equipment, that's the most efficient to use, is three-phase.
Yeah, and it's not like you need exposed frontage. You're not trying to attract the business.
No, no, we're not trying to attract that, and our intent was really is, instead of coming back out there and planting a row of arborvitae's or something like that, it's just to kind of keep that natural, the existing cover that's there. And when you look at it, too, and you look at the grades, the property's kind of up on a hump, so to speak, where the roadway is protected. You really got to look in there, I think, to see cars that would be parked. And again, that, we stood, and we had the site walk, I stood on where that first handicap space is going to be, our first parking spots, a handicap space, and where that is, and then you could look around and see, you know, how you don't really have a huge visual of Route 4 traffic going past you. You're, you know, you're kind of hidden. We, I mean--
Well, I don't think you want to draw attention, and you're looking at the narrow part of the building from Route 4 anyway.
Yeah, exactly.
But Blackberry Hill will see the white part.
They'll see the white part, but it's going to be a roof with a dark green siding that is tucked in behind the existing pine trees and tucked in onto that space. So, again, you know, our intent here is just to, you know, to take out the space that we need, the trees that we need, and not, and leave the remaining.
So I know now we have, now we have the email from the police chief that we didn't have before, which is good. I know we had always talked about sharing these applications with all the department heads in the town, like making sure the fire chief knows, the police chief, and I mean, I guess the email is good enough, but just as long as it stays on file. But, I mean, preferably, we should, I know it's on the chief. I'm sure it's, it's up to him to create that letter instead of an email, you know? But I think, I think the email's fine, but just for formality, maybe, in the future, we do letters?
Initially, he did write a letter, Dave. I think it was that he was just reaffirming that he was okay with the extended hours.
Okay.
Because the hours had changed to 24 by 7.
Yeah, we originally had an original letter where he didn't have any issues. And then the question came up is that there was concerns about, you know, the leasee, the grower in there, if he wants to be in there off hours, and that's why I just had a verification, double-checked with the chief, and that's what that email was for.
Okay, gotcha.
But the first approval review came on a letterhead from the PD.
Now I do remember that. You guys have been in here for a while, so.
Yeah.
Did we want to talk about your odor control plan?
Sure. As you see before you, we went through and looked at the ordinance and went and kind of tried to develop a plan. The first part of the plan is, on the first page there, is to give a description of the property and description of the process. And then we give information so that everything's on file. We have the owner information, the building owner that is going to lease the space is out on, in file, on, not only on the plan, but in this paperwork in the code office. And then also, we have a statement on there that was at the request of the PD, the police chief, was that we have information that all tenants provide their contact information and unit numbers for record-keeping in case there's an issue. So we have that dictated right there in the beginning of the plan, so everything's in one consistent spot. Then we talk about the odor-producing processes. That's as indicated in the ordinance definition. So we go through the different sections, and realistically, different growing portions of the process emit odor, and otherwise, they don't. But most of these areas are going to be protected, they're going to, because they happen in the same space. You're going to have an odor control system that is going to be able to treat those air areas. And we go through the odor control requirements and talking about, you know, opening, closing doors to help mitigate movement of odor, and then going into the fact of each portion of the growing process about administrative controls and making sure that tenants understand what the situation is, and then talking about what we called engineering controls, of making sure that, you know, those are the mechanical fans, mechanical areas that push the air to a carbon scrubber. And we indicate in there that we, at a minimum, they have to use carbon scrubbing to treat any exhaust air, but we also give them the opportunities of more future cost-effective or changing technologies, they can use that. And then also, at the very end, we talk about the carbon filtration requirements at a minimum here, about how they need to make sure that it's in the right process so that any exhaust air that leaves the facility is passing through a carbon filtration.
Mike, what did you think about this?
It seems pretty good. It seems like with the carbon filtration, a lot of it's just going to be a matter of size and CFM, the rating of the fans and the filters, so that, basically, all this seems pretty, pretty good.
What kind of a maintenance, cleaning, maintenance schedule?
Usually, they're about once a year. Usually--
Oh, it's not like every week or every month?
No, usually, it's when you start to smell outside, or yearly.
And on here, it says the filters must be changed at the minimum of every six months.
Yeah, so the filters last for a year.
What's a carbon filter look like? Is it a metallic filter, a paper?
Well, it's basically a metal cylinder with holes in it, and it's just, they fill charcoal, little bits of charcoal in it, and then they just cap it.
So the way you clean it, then, you probably dump that charcoal and refill it?
Just get a new one. Throw that out.
Where do the six-month criteria come from, do you know?
I think what the material that we looked at in working with the building owner over here is looking at different processes, and some of the, there's so many different manufacturers that make the carbon filtration. Some say you need to change it every 12 to 18 months, some say six to 18. So we went with the six-month requirement that, at a minimum, they need to change it every six months and provide documentation. So, and also in our report, we have the requirement that the person that leases the space create and maintain a maintenance log of what they do for that and have that on file so that if code office needs to come in, because if there's a complaint or whatever the reason is, then they can be able to verify what's going on.
Yeah, and a little bit of checking that I did, it seems that that's a big issue, is the maintenance of these carbon filter systems.
Yep.
And when they fail, then it's pretty obvious.
Yeah, and I think, you know, if we look at what they pull through, you know, and we went on the lower bound of what the maintenance requirement, you know, maintenance profile is. You know, it may come through that, you know, and it's really, this is, this is the template. Now, when the first tenant comes in, he's going to have his own odor control plan, and that's going to go through there. Now, if he's got a piece of equipment that says that the, that his odor control needs to be changed every nine months, then it still falls back to six months here. Or if he has one that says, "I need to change it every three months," that's his prerogative to do that. But at least this is the, you know, these are the minimum standards here that need to be required unless that tenant can come forward with a new plan with proof that there's a different process.
And I'm sure in the conditional use and the conditions, some words similar to what you just said can be added.
Yeah, I think we tried to do that on the plan, too.
So we start with the six months?
Yep.
Yeah, if we have any issues?
Yeah, I think, and that's why I put this in here and on the first paragraph, or I know somewhere in here, it's, we made sure that it ties into the approved site plan, and it references the site plan. And then we have notes that, on the updated plans that you provided up in that left-hand corner, we have notes that reference this document as well. So there's no way to get this thing to get lost in the future, so that, and this will be in the file in the planning office and in the code office when it comes through for that aspect of it.
I think, you know, we need to have that fully covered by the time, and understand by the time we have a public hearing, because that'll probably be the number-one issue, I would imagine.
Yep, and I think, yeah, I think if you get a chance to sit here and read through this, I think you'll feel comfortable with that we've covered the requirements and indicated where--
Yeah, it's more thorough. Yeah, it's very thorough.
It's more thorough than I expected.
Than I expected, yeah.
So, yeah, it's refreshing.
Yeah, and I'm going to, I'm going to speak for, you know, the property owner. I mean, he doesn't want to do anything or leave it up to chance that there's going to be a negative owner for anybody in the vicinity.
Yeah, still planning on windowless building?
Absolutely.
Except for the vents?
Except for any vents, and those vents would be there. And, you know, and we talked about it at the last meeting, is that, you know, there are, there may be a tenant that comes in and he wants to make sure that he doesn't exhaust any air, and everything's internal, and he's only going to, so that may, that's a different process. So we look at that. But these are the minimum standards, so that if they exhaust any air out to the outside of the building, that it's got to be covered by this process, this system that's to go through a carbon scrubber so that it removes the odor potential from the building.
Will the town, or the code enforcement office in the town have knowledge of, let's say, someone does come in and they say, "No, no, I want to recycle my air. I will scrub it and reuse the air."
Yeah, because we're just creating a box for that tenant to come in. So as that, as that tenant comes in to get his building permit to fit it out, he has to apply for a building permit himself. So then he'll go through the occupancy permit, he'll have to provide his own plan at the same time.
So he'll, he'll have to touch base with the code enforcement?
He has to get a building permit to do any work in there, exactly.
Right, and which brings up another point, and I know it's outside Planning Board, but, you know, and it was brought up, I think, two weeks ago. That's going to cost the town to, I mean, the code enforcement guy is probably going to be quite busy, or could be quite busy.
But I think that's part of, that's part of the building permit fee.
It's part of the fee.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's separate from, from the fee for this site plan review, and then when they go to pull a building permit, that's based on, I don't, I am not sure, but I know other towns, it's based on square footage.
That he has come in, is going to have to go see the seat--
And every time, code enforcement won't have to go out. So what I'm saying, he's going to be very busy.
They'd have to go out for anything, any, well, they're not going to be very busy. I don't think he's, I think they're talking--
Yeah, it's not like too many people should really be calling, complaining.
I mean, they would have to go out for a new garage or something, so I don't think it's necessarily--
Maybe it won't be an issue.
I, I mean, I think with, with these kind of guidelines and plans, and looking at the report, other kind of odor control plans that we've looked at, that this is, this covers as best as can be done right now, the potential to address any exhaust air that comes out of that building.
I have a question, Jeff. Just to maybe touch on what Paul was saying, and maybe this will make him feel a little more assured, but once a tenant has outfitted a space, they're likely to stay for a while, I would assume. So the turnover would probably be minimal once they've outfitted the space and continue their operations.
That's right, yeah, because they're going to put a very large investment into that space through lighting, through mechanical ventilation, heating and cooling, and filtration. So, you know, it's in their best interest to be there for a while and to be a good neighbor. If not, code enforcement will be there, and they will have to cease operation as part of--
And really, we, there weren't, this, this area isn't going to handle a ton of tenants either, right? Was it like four, maybe, is what we're thinking, four, five?
Yeah, I mean, I think we look at, you know, the first phase that we have for that building.
Right.
You know, that's the first building that's on the south end.
Yep.
You know, realistically, two users.
Well, not, yeah. So it's, it's not--
It may be one user wants to take the whole space, but right now, we're thinking, and if you look at the building plans that we presented for that Phase 1, it shows it's split down the middle for two users.
Right, yeah. So I don't think it'll be burning.
Paul?
Yeah, I still do the math in my head based on what I've read about medicinal marijuana, and, and the math is, we have, we have a building, we have an owner of the building, and I'm kind of hearing that we're going to have two providers or two clients leasing from the owner of the building. Is each one of those two people, is that considered a caregiver, or is he going to have multiple caregivers under his jurisdiction? How's that going to work as far as number of providers in a 9,000-square-foot building?
Well, I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head. Do you know, Paul?
Yeah, each one--
Sir, could you just, if you might, just come into the podium, please?
State, state your name, Jeff.
Paul Vnudy, thank you. Yeah, each, each caregiver will be in one space, so there can't be multiple caregivers renting out one space, right? So, so say we split the warehouse in one, it can only be one caregiver that has the whole warehouse. We can't like--
But a caregiver is limited to six, five patients, six plants per, mature plants.
Sure, sure. It could, you could have upwards of 36 mature plants if you count yourself in the warehouse, which is pretty sizable. And then if you, if you consider maybe the room that's vegetative, where he has, you know, the clones, where he's pulling the clones, that can be a pretty sizable space as well.
Is that where the 9,000 square feet come in, then? Is the in-between processes?
It can be. It just depends on who I end up getting in there.
And there's other rooms, too. Like you have drying room, probably.
Yeah, processing room.
Processing room.
We covered that in the odor mitigation plan.
Yeah, and one thing I did learn from Jeff earlier today, which is not odor control, it's, it's the septic. So Jeff tells me that, well, when we get to it, we can discuss that, but I think we're all done with the odor.
Did we want to continue to talk about the odor control plan? Jeff, did you want to go on to the septic?
Yeah, we can talk about two things, because one of the questions that came up in there, it didn't come up at our last meeting, but it came up at our very first meeting, was talking about what happens with any kind of excess water from plantings and cleaning down. So we have that issue, and we have a septic system on our property. The proposed septic system is just for toilet waste. It's not tied into any floor drains or anything like that, because you can't put that kind Because you can't put that kind of wa- wastewater, I wouldn't call it wastewater, because there's still an unknown definition, that irrigation water, let's call it irrigate.
It's processed water.
That irrigation water into a leach field for residential, 'cause it kills the bacteria. I was, had the question about, okay, what, what do they do? What does a regular greenhouse do? What, what happens when you go and they have the, you know, same kind of irrigation water that comes through? So I contacted the DEP and I talked to their water quality person. And his question wa, his answer to me was, "Well, we really don't have any rules for that. It all, it all depends. It all depends on the volume of water you have and what the water's made up of. 'Cause right now, we don't have any controls on any greenhouses. They can let their water just go wherever it needs to be."
Well, we're worried about, specifically talking about, is the nitrates.
Yeah, and here, and here's, and here's what I'm getting at to that. We didn't wanna do that. We didn't feel that that's the, that's the proper way to do it. So what we have on the plan that you see there is that if, and, and we talked to different potential tenants, not all of them have excess water issues. So what we are proposing and on the plan here is that for every space that there is, if they have a floor drain and under drain like that, it's gonna be dictated outside to a one thousand gallon holding tank that they will be responsible to pump, to have it pumped out and taken to a treatment plant when it gets to that point.
Okay.
So each plant, each, each tenant on that space, you'll see that has a one thousand gallon holding tank. That, the water just drains inside a holding tank, doesn't go into leach field, doesn't go out into the ground on the property. It stays in that tank and, and then when it, that tank gets full, they have to call up a, a pumping service and it gets pumped and taken to the Southburg Treatment Plant.
So I take it this tank is under the ground like any.
Like any other septic tank. It's a septic tank with just one pipe coming into it.
So where are those located on the plan?
If you look at the plan, you can see them in the, um, in the parking lot.
So I see the two for, that I'm thinking are gonna cover the Phase One building, but I don't see a Phase Two or Phase Three under there.
Yep, I think if you should, um, there are, I don't know if you have the most recent copy of that.
I might not.
No, these are under, under the parking.
They're under the parking, yeah, yeah, just like any other kind of septic tank that has a, have you to cover on that, on that. But what we would do is, is the same item, is the same, is the same area for that, for the other phases.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
I would wanna see those on the plan then.
I know that, um, so for instance, like in the shore land zone, this obviously doesn't apply, because this isn't near a major river.
No, but the Southburg Water Wells are, as the crow flies, not very far from this.
So, but I know that in the shore land zone, for instance, we have a seventy-five foot setback from any nitrates, any type of fertilizer. I don't know how much fertilizer normally goes into this, and I think this is probably something that we never really thought about. Um, you know, there is, uh, wetlands back here. I would assume that it's get, the water coming out of there is gonna have high nitrates in it, because it's gonna have fertilizer in it. So, no, I think this is great that you put in those wells, because I'm just thinking it would be
Yeah, and that's.
An environmental nightmare just having something re.
And that's the reason why we put the tanks in there, is thinking is that, you know, there, I mean, if, if this project was on city sewer, it'd be a different situation. But it, since, even though there's no regulations by the DEP for that overflow.
Well, I thank you for doing that, but I think it's something maybe in the future, for the next round of changes to the land use ordinance, that's something that we put in there, that there has to be some capability to do that.
Do you?
To, to, to hold, to have some type of holding for.
Okay.
While there's odor control, you need.
Medical marijuana facilities, we're talking.
For, for medical marijuana facilities or any type of marijuana facilities.
Processed water, processed water treatment.
Processed water treatment.
Well, I think, I mean, if that's the case, you need to cover it for any kind of greenhouses.
Well, I agree, I agree.
Probably would.
But see, here's the problem, is that you get into that fine line, what do you do about farm fields?
Right.
That, see, and we look at what the, the idea difference here.
But that's not as high intensity as what we're doing here.
It's the same, but if I, if I got a high intensity, um, I look at.
It's a good discussion that we can have.
We can have it later on, but I, and I, and I think that's where the DEP is, in this conundrum of saying, how do I do this when we don't have controls over irrigation water for that?
And I don't think the state laws that are being formulated as we talk right here, I don't think they're, they've even brought that up. And I, I asked you the question, and I was glad to hear that you had, I see two on the plan here in the parking lot, thousand gallon tanks that would hold the processed water if you, if you're gonna have it. And because looking at the, at, at the site and the Adams Brook behind the site, that goes right down past, right into the Southburg Water Wells off Pond Road.
Exactly, and, and eventually it gets there, yeah. It go, it go, it takes a while to get down around the corner, yeah.
Well, I, I appreciate.
And that's why, and that's why we said, okay, let's address this with a holding tank. That way it takes, takes that completely off the table of a situation where we're, where we're dumping irrigation water off.
Thank you, thank you for being a good steward of the law.
So processed water not leaving the building, it's being tanked and being hauled off.
Yeah, it's being just drained into the tank and, and right there and being hauled off.
That's a discussion for another day, so I don't wanna get too far off topic. But thank you for bringing that up. Do we have any other questions for the applicant at this time?
I guess, oh, I'm sorry.
I would just like to see on the final plan, all of the holding tanks noted. I know you said that we might not have the, the last iteration of it, but.
I can tell you right now.
Right, right, so that's something.
In the digital AutoCAD file in my, on my screen, it has those tanks on.
All right, thank you.
I just had a couple of comments about, we talked about the screening already. I went out a week or so ago on the weekend and kinda looked at the site and, um, looked around. I know, like Paul said, the, that whole area, it's pretty mature, you know, the canopy's pretty high. Um, it's a question of like what depth is gonna be left. I know, you know, as it's shown here on the plan, you got the edge of the road and then the edge of the tree line, you know, do we have any idea what depth that is?
Yeah, I think.
That's not very deep, you're not gonna get much screening there.
True, along that side, it's probably, if we, by the time it's all done, it's probably gonna be about twelve to fifteen feet in, in, in depth of that cover area on that side. And I guess the, and, and I think the idea with that, um, the site walk was to see, you know, how does that look with that remaining and, and standing in there and with respect to the elevation differences along Route Four, how that fits.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't think it's a huge concern, I know where I, I parked on the side of the road.
Yeah.
I looked at it, I know it kinda goes down, the road is a little up. Um, but I'm, I just don't know if we're gonna have as much screening left as people may think, 'cause you've got a, you know, a detention area here, that's gotta be cleared.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, you're not, we're not clearing that right to the edge of that top, um, contour line, so you gotta clear back a little bit from that.
Yeah, but your, your screening talks about, um, for parking. And we're in, and we're in that section of the park.
But in a conditional use process, you can have additional conditions to handle issues.
No, I understand that, yeah.
What Sean is saying is correct, I mean, because we stood in the woods right on the building line, and I looked at the houses on Blackberry Hill, and they're really visible.
Yeah, I mean, you're losing quite a bit of that natural screen. You've got the, the, um, septic area, which, you know, you're not, it's not gonna get cleared just to that box that's shown on the drawing. You gotta clear back from that.
Yeah, a little bit around it, yeah.
You've got the, the cut from CMP, they're gonna have some clearance that they want on that, so you're gonna clear that wider than that shows, the detention pond. So we're kinda, you know, reducing the natural screening that's left. And then it's, like I said, it's fairly mature trees, there's not a lot of low, you know, canopy.
I mean, if, I mean, we can, I guess we can supplement it with some arbovites, I mean, I, I mean, I've got feeling.
I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even say arbovites, I mean, if, if it came down to it, like, I wouldn't mind letting it go and then maybe looking at it after and saying, maybe we need a couple of, you know, younger white pines put back in here somewhere to kinda help, so that they can grow in and kinda screen things, something like that. Um, but, you know, it's, I, I know we're, we're talking about it, and I was like, well, we're not gonna really have much screen left by the time we're done with the.
There, there should be something on the plan that would allow that, you know, depending on conditions as things start up.
Yeah, I mean, if there was like some sort of a.
Is wide open into the site.
I don't know, a post-cutting review that we could have and look at it and kinda see how it is, I mean.
I don't know if that, I don't know if we could necessarily do that, I think that would be up to any of the, if, if the waiver was granted, if there were any conditions of the waiver, and then we allowed the code enforcement officer to, once he granted the certificate.
Well, the, the, the two recent apartments on Cemetery Road, there were three neighbors, I believe, on Cemetery Road, quite a distance from the two apartment houses, and screening went in there.
Yeah.
The block, and this is the block, you know.
Well, I know, we, we discussed that quite a bit.
And brought it up, so maybe we wait to see who comes to the public hearing, 'cause it's not a requirement for this, and so I don't feel like we should really discuss it too much, because it's not a requirement.
But keep it in mind.
Keep it in mind, if the people come to the, for the public hearing and they want it, then we can talk about it.
It's not an issue, it's not an issue.
Right.
Yeah. And the only other question I had was on the, the access that the fire chief had asked about, is he planning to bring equipment back there, or does he just want hose access or?
I think he's, I, I, yeah, I don't think he'd ever take, I mean, I think as taxpayers, you'd be upset if he brought it back there. I think he just wants hose access if he needs to get something back there.
I'm not, I'm pretty sure he's not making a corner with a fire truck.
No, exactly, no, and he's seen this plan and he's reviewed the plan. So I think it's more of just being able to have a, a better access around the back if he ever needs to run his guys back there or run a pickup truck or, you know, the small, that small forest fire Humvee that they have or something like that. He's not gonna bring any of the bigger trucks back there.
Yeah. That was all I had.
Okay, David, do you have anything?
No.
Any other discussion from the planning board? Okay, so do we wanna discuss these waivers? We wanna discuss the, the waiver that you're looking for for landscaping requirements.
I think, you know, our justification is we look at what's, what's there, um, for existing vegetation and how it fits in the neighborhood. And, um, you know, you run up Route Four, there's not a lot of vegetation on front of the existing parking for other commercial spaces that were recently approved, but, um, wanna be able to, to, you know, work with that natural area and keep that kinda natural vegetation around, you know, the, I call it natural, but I'm gonna call it historic vegetation, so it doesn't look like it's supplemented with additional. I think if there's the need, I agree, there's some white pines or something like that would be a better fit, 'cause they would, they would be a little bit nicer in that, you know, fit, I'm gonna call it historical or that kinda, same kinda.
Blend in a little better.
Yeah, blend in, yeah.
Do you wanna talk about this, uh, this waiver request? I mean, is, is this actually even a waiver?
Well, we.
It is for submission requirements.
Right.
You're just require, you're saying that you, you are okay, you vote in the affirmative, you're saying you're okay with the fact that no landscaping plan was submitted to meet the submission requirements to screen the parking.
Shouldn't we wait until we have a public hearing before we get in the waivers?
You, you can, you could waive, waive the submission requirement, but then as a condition of approval, make a request to plant, you know, pine trees, for instance.
Right, so it's, we're not waiving our right to request it.
You're just waiving the landscaping plan, a formal landscaping plan requirement.
Yeah. I think, you know, my feeling is, this is the first time we've had a conditional use for this type of facility, and I don't think we wanna shortchange our options as the town of Berwick. And I think we wanna cover everything, and starting to waive various things at this point, um, I don't think I'm in favor of that.
Well, it's just a waiver of the, just for the submission. So it's not wa, we're not waiving a landscape plan, we're just waiving a landscape plan for this part, for this part.
Only the submission.
Part of it to get them through to the next phase.
So then it's perfectly clear that we could ask for a submission at, at a later time?
Yes.
Yes.
In order to make the application complete this evening, if we decide to.
Yeah, I understand that.
I, I just.
Does that, does that.
Totally understand your.
Does that, yeah, does that color our ability to ask for this? You know, let's say the applicant comes in later on and he said, "Yeah, no, you didn't care about it then, why would you care about it now?"
You're, you're waiving the requirement for a formal landscaping plan that would show trees like in exact locations or, or plants in the exact locations that they would be placed, Paul. I think the discussion that you're having with, with Jeff and his client right now has more to do with, um, maybe a few more randomly placed white pines. Um, I think, I think you could, in fact, um, waive the, the formal landscaping plan, but say you're waiving it on the condition that you would like to continue the discussion about whether or not additional landscaping.
So at this time, for completeness sake.
Yes.
That's the reason we're doing it, and we reserve the right to enter this discussion after we have a public hearing. And if that's clear, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, okay.
I know in the past, we have approved an application, we've, we've done a waiver for, say, we're, we're missing something from, um, you know, a notice from the fire chief on something. And then, but we, we voted, but we voted the application complete, brought it to public hearing, and before we approved the application, we made that a, 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 um, condition of approval, that that letter was there.
Yeah.
So this doesn't necessarily say that we can't bring this up, this issue up again.
So this would clear the path, then, for completeness, which means a public hearing.
Right, because the, I think, I think what you fear, what I, I think what we all fear is that we go to have a public hearing. We, we waive this, say, okay, you don't need to worry about it. We go to have a public hearing, and we get residents on Blackberry Hill Road who come in, similar to what we had in other areas, who were very concerned about screening, but then there's nothing we could do about it. Does that make sense to you?
If that's clear, I don't have a problem, I mean, it's.
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding of it.
Do we, but do we have to make a waiver? Can we just approve the application complete with the exception of, uh, no, I don't know how that would work. Just trying to think procedurally. This is the only, this is the only waiver that we are, that is being requested. Okay, so the, it would be, how would that sound? So we're making a motion for waiving seven point seven of the land use ordinance?
Just for application completeness purposes.
Yes. Make, I'll make a motion to waive the requirements for a landscaping plan just to approve the, or, or just to vote on application completeness. Does that sound too convoluted?
Kathy! Um, I think maybe the motion might be, um, move to find the application complete with the waiver granted of a formal landscaping plan not being necessary. Um, and maybe with the condition that later on, there may be further discussion.
Okay, there's my motion right there, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. All right, so we're gonna wait for our public hearing, get some more feedback, and we can also revisit the landscape plan and also make suggestions. And in the conditional, in, in, in conditions of approval, we can also specifically state in there several things. We could state, every attempt should be made to keep all existing trees. I mean, I understand you're gonna have to cut some things down, the septic, the CMP right away, or the CMP entry, but every attempt should be made to not clear cut the front of it. I know that's not what you're gonna do, but.
Could we, um, when we, when we're discussing that, could we say, you know, for every tree cut, something is planted? Because the leach field is going to, you know, you can't plant on top of it, and you have to keep a buffer around it, but could you say, you know, if you cut ten trees, you have to plant ten trees along the front of that, that?
Well, I, you know, and then you're starting to get into specifics, and you may not want to.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, you know, I, I like the way Kathy put it out, that as long as we reserve the right to, um, to require some landscaping as the issues with the abutters turn up. And I, I like Sean's idea of using native things like small pines. I mean, they do pretty well even in a tall, with tall trees around them.
Yeah, and I think like, and I, like I said, along, along the road, I don't think we have to have you build an impervious, you know, green fence that nobody can see through, but just, you know, depending on what comes down.
Yeah.
Add something back to kinda break things up a little bit.
Yeah, and I frankly, probably more worried with the, the houses that we could see from the building site through the trees. I mean, you could see the guy's boat in the backyard, you could see, you know, that kinda stuff.
Yeah.
But you're just gonna see the back of a green building.
Right, well, that's what I'm thinking, too, I mean, it's not, it doesn't, it's not like.
You know, it's not like it's a, it's not like it's a scrapyard.
Right.
Or anything like that.
That's true.
And they're not gonna have headlights shining through the building.
No, no, they won't.
It's actually.
All these things can be brought out at the public hearing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, and, and.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, do we have further discussion? So the motion is for prove, our motion is for finding the application complete with a waiver for the landscaping requirements that could be brought back up again in two weeks with the, or. with the, or at the, at the public hearing before we approve the application. Sound good?
Yep.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by raising your hands? Okay, that's five zero. All right.
Thank you.
Now we got to talk about a public hearing, noticing requirements.
Yeah, so March 1st should be right.
Can we do March 1st? Let's just double check here.
It's going to be a busy day for us.
What else on March 1st?
We have a site walk. We've got the-
I mean, it's, it's going to be a busy night.
It's going to be a busy night. It's just going to be a busy night.
They've waited a long time. They've, you know, I know they want, they're ready to get moving here March 1st.
Yeah.
Does that work?
Usually Thursdays, I've reserved.
Just don't take a nap.
Bring a snack.
Well, we have a site walk, so you won't take a nap. All right, Thursday, March 1st.
Okay, so I'll touch base with you Kathy about what, how many copies and what the deadline is because I think we're just ready to make prints and get them to you.
All right, sounds good.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we're talking about public hearing March 1st. The land use ordinance modifications, I am wondering, that could bring out lots of people because there are a lot of abutters. You know, the change in the lines on the map.
The village overlay district boundary, yep.
Are we getting too deep as far as scheduling that on March 1st, all three?
Well, let's see, you'll have this on, you'll have, I know you have a site visit with Paul Hollis. I don't know that he's-
That's another big project.
I need to reach out to him and see if he's planning on actually appearing. Yeah, and, and Misty too. Possibly.
Speak louder, yeah.
So, yeah, it looks like you'll have probably four things on, going on, four separate things, yeah.
It is what it is. We got to get used, listen, we've got to get, yeah, we got to get used to it.
When prime tanning comes in, man, it's going to be a zoo, yeah.
Just training.
All right.
I like that mindset.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along here, in old business, conditional use application, residential holistic healing center, professional office, recreation facility, yoga, medical office, family whole health appointments. Applicant Misty Boyd, 8 Wilson Street, MAP U4, lot 140-1. This was an application that we had that was, went to the zoning board of adjustment, oh, zoning board of appeals, I'm sorry, board of appeals last night, and it was approved. It was, it needed, the applicant needed a variance of 2,367, decimal six, square feet for minimum lot size in order to have a mixed use in, at her residence, which is in the commercial industrial zone. Kathy, what do you got?
Um, I think you'll find a fairly complete application in front of you. Misty has filled out the application, provided floor plans, very detailed floor plans, I might add. She's planning to run the holistic healing center. If you look at, she has a site plan, it's like maybe five or six sheets in, where she shows the entire footprint of the building. And she's going to be running the holistic healing center from the forward toward the street portion of the building. And I believe she'll be living in the rear portion of the building. She has included an arrangement with the church next door for six parking spaces. It's a, it's a very carefully thought-through agreement that has been signed by both Misty and the church representative. She's included letters from the water department and the sewer. She had a fire marshal's response. I don't know if she's had more correspondence to the fire marshal's office or not. She can tell you herself. But I, I think we can let Misty fill in any other gaps that I haven't talked about.
Hello.
Hello.
Nice to see you again.
You too.
And I, this probably should have come during the public comments, so I apologize if I speak out of turn, but I really just wanted to take one moment to thank the board for your actions at the last meeting.
Oh, thank you.
And for expanding the zone. It meant a lot.
Good.
Thank you for that and for the town of Berwick and for the people that are coming in. I just think it's, it's going to be great.
Appreciate your patience also.
Yeah.
Even the, even the new patients you're getting.
We're all learning, right? This is the growth process for all of us. So, yeah, I think Kathy pretty much summed up everything. The only thing, the agreement with the church, they did designate those six spaces outside of three different hours of operations that they need them, but in line four, they also said we're free to use the other parking spaces. So it wasn't, it wasn't just those six, but they designated those six. We do plan to put parking spaces in on our driveway in that property. The church has said that, because our building sat vacant for five years and the church just used the driveway as their own. But they fit as many as 12 cars easily in our driveway. So we were just kind of waiting till spring. That's why this says we'll revisit. So we were waiting to see till spring because also, all of the members of the church use, have been using our driveway as part of the church parking lot. So we've kind of just leaving that open to see how it all plays out. And then if we need to designate a, this is the way in and this is the way out, or, you know, how, how that's going to flow. So far, it's been, been pretty easy. People have acclimated. And the people that I've had coming to see me, guests and such, you know, just park along that one side. So we plan on eventually bringing the stone wall that separates our property all the way to the end and just making it all parking there. So that'll add at least like seven or eight spaces.
Are you saying that it's pretty natural when you drive into the church, it's become a de facto one-way in, one-way out using your driveway then?
It, it ha, well, because it was vacant, yeah, it was vacant and they, they do that.
Yeah, so they, and I always assumed that that went with the church.
Yeah, no.
They go in every Wednesday, supper.
Yeah.
They go in one way, they come out the other way.
Yeah, and actually, they even park in our driveway and that's, that was the great part. But that was the great part with the church. I mean, I'm okay with that. They're willing to let us use their parking space when they're not in activity, so it's-
Works out well. Good neighbors.
It did work out, yes. They were excited to have somebody that wasn't upset by a constant use of their driveway. So hopefully that answers the questions of the parking. And then all this week, just to get finalization, because the memo that we did get from the fire marshal said if we needed anything more from you, we'll let you know. And I just stuck with no news is good news until Monday, knowing it'd hopefully be here today. And we've played phone pack back and forth all week, so we haven't connected. The same woman would just, I just have one of those jobs that I can't answer the phone. Like when I'm in session, I'm not able to, so hopefully we'll connect in the next day or so.
Misty, I did have one question.
Yeah.
You had said what the hours of operation were, but I wasn't sure if it was Monday through Friday or like Sunday through Saturday. I mean, is it seven days a week or is it five?
Um, it's seven days a week.
Seven days a week, okay.
Yeah, but, um, to practitioner's schedule, so there, there might naturally end up times that everybody takes the same day off.
Okay.
One thing I wanted to add was that with all the uses that you think you're going to have, that's why I added like recreational facility for yoga. I just want to make sure that we're including all the uses in there, like what we did with Mont Sullivan.
Yeah, yep.
Oh, recreational facilities for yoga?
Because holistic healing center is a used.
Yeah, it's not a defined use.
I, I always find that to be very confusing when you have like an umbrella, like a holistic center, which includes massage, it includes this and includes that.
It's personal services, basically, that's what-
Yeah, I'm wondering if there should be additional definitions that would make this easier, you know? So, but I think James' thought is excellent, that we just enumerate under holistic center, it includes these functionalities.
Because if you had, like you said, yeah, you're not talking into the microphone, James. If you had a yoga class of six people, right, inside, is that conceivable?
Inside the space?
Yeah.
Our yoga class will max out at 10.
10. So that rec covers it. Good.
You know, I think that, I think that would be professional services or whatever that is.
Would that still be considered that?
I'm not sure it's recreational yoga we're talking about. I think it still comes under professional, or like personal services because this is more, I mean, it's, it's not like going to the gym and taking one of those intense yoga classes. I'm guessing it's more geared towards therapy and things like that.
Therapeutic, yeah.
I think it still could be considered personal services. It's, it's not exactly like yoga at my gym.
So, so even including a word like therapeutic, you know, yoga, which I know is, you know, people that are dealing with health issues, they get into it often.
Yes.
Maybe a word, it's a definition type thing.
Right, but we don't have a definition for personal services or therapeutic yoga in our-
Services, that's too vague.
Yeah, well, it's, it's not defined in our, in our L U O though. So I think that would be the key, would be tying it to a definition in here, which is why James said recreation, right?
To include these services.
Okay.
But it's, I don't think, my, my point is I don't think it's fair to really say each one of those is an additional use.
Okay.
That's where I got it from. There's service business in your use table.
Yeah, service business is in here. Barber shops, beauty parlors, laundry, repairs.
Business ads is what, and I think we're doing that.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a service business.
Yeah.
It is defined.
Okay, yes.
Good.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. How would the, how would the board like to move forward? Do you think the application's complete?
Application complete.
I will make a motion that this application is complete to include a variance granted by the Berwick Appeals Board.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And seconded. Further discussion? Okay, so you know one, no further discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your hands? Okay, that's five zero. And so it is now complete, and now we have to set a public hearing, which we will do on March 1st.
We don't need a site walk, do we?
Oh, that's a, that's a good question, yes. Do we need a site walk for this? Do we feel that we need it to go and do a site walk?
We do have a site walk already on March 1st, just FYI.
I personally, the way I feel about it, I don't need to go on a site visit, but I'm willing to go if somebody feels that we should go.
Well, I mean, you will have business hours and we can always come in and ask a question, right?
Yeah, I, I think the only purpose for the site walk would be the parking, but that seems to be all, you know, I mean, she's got a signed parking agreement, which is pretty thorough.
Okay. We'll just do the public hearing then on the 1st. Thank you. All right. There's no new business scheduled for this evening. Informational items, number four on this list here tonight on our agenda. Berwick fact sheet, stormwater discharges from municipal's separate stormwater sewer systems. I'm sure that James wants to talk all about this.
So this fact sheet, I'll let you guys get to the season call along. I'm just going to read a couple of sentences from a few of the different paragraphs, just to cover, summarize it. So about this fact sheet, this fact sheet is being provided to you to help fulfill a requirement of a Clean Water Act permit to which the town is subject. So part of the MS4 permit. You're receiving this fact sheet because some aspects of your position as planning board members are affected by the MS4 permit. What should you do with the information? The permit requires that they assess your awareness periodically. You're being tested. Town staff or towns consultant, which is Kristi Vasca, she'll be at the selectmen's meeting, I think the next selectmen's meeting, so tune into that. She's awesome.
Yes, she is.
She is awesome.
She's good.
Uh, the towns consultant may interview you or attend a meeting to determine if your committee or board is aware of the permit. So the next, the next part is all the stuff you guys need to do for homework on the back page. The land use has been amended and will be amended again. There's land use ordinance articles, what is it, seven performance standards? 7.22 post-construction stormwater management article has been passed to assist planning staff in informing the public about this requirement and to allow the code enforcement to obtain certifications from owners that they are properly maintaining their stormwater structures. What specifically do I need to know from my position? Planning boards, understand that some of the MS4 general permit requires two ordinances being enforced by the town. The one I just read, non-stormwater discharge ordinance and post-construction ordinance. These ordinances cannot be altered without potentially causing a permit violation. Where to go for more information? Steve, Robert, and me. So on the back of that page, there's the follow the flow, which is hanging up in our town hall, and it's just saying, be careful because bad stuff can go through the storm drains. So be mindful of what you put in your lawn. And then lastly is a map, which shows where our MS4 area is, which is pretty much the downtown area. That's all I have for this evening. Are there any questions?
Can I, can I add something that people may be interested? If they want to see an example of MS4 remediation is the project on which the piece of land at the corner of Bolton and Sawmill Hill that the town now owns and was going to play, were planning on a park and a whole bunch. So the work that's been done right at the intersection is a good thing to look at to know what this is like on the ground.
It's a perfect example.
What does MS4, you know, do for us? And that's going to continue down probably for the next five years. I think this project, MS4 project, they're going down river and making sure that all stormwater ends up clean in the river. Was that picture taken in Berwick, James?
Right down here on Rochester Street, as a matter of fact.
Thanks, James.
Talking about fertilizer just a little while ago.
We've talked about that. I think, I think we actually do a darn good job. We've talked about that extensively, fertilizer and protecting our river.
So moving along to discussion on the public hearing for the land use ordinance and zoning map, which is going to happen on March 1st. I've been doing some thinking and on, in the last go-around of the land use ordinance, we took out, on page 41 of the land use ordinance there, okay? The village overlay district, 6.4, we took that out. And we replaced that with the design standards. Okay, I don't have the updated copy of the land use ordinance.
Would you like it? Because I do have it.
Okay, so just correct me if I'm wrong, 6.4 is no longer, 6.4-
6.4 is there.
It's just different.
Yeah.
It's your form-based code now.
I think it came in looking like this, Dave.
All right, no, I, so mine is correct.
This, this is 6.4.
Yep.
So Nicole, your 6.4 in here is the old one. That's the one that I have.
Well, James just handed this to me and told me it was the updated, most updated version of the land use ordinance.
So in 6.4-
But you know what?
Right, so- What I gave you is the more updated, most updated version. So, so the, the printed ordinances that we have, right?
It's just a three hole punch.
It's, it's the ones that were updated.
Passed out one, three, baby.
No, I understand. I understand. So, so 6.4 was totally changed. And one of the things that was, was in there was the, was the, in 6.4D5, we eliminated this here. The planning board may permit residential uses on the first floor of new buildings within the village overlay on a case-by-case basis when the application satisfies the following criteria. First floor residential use is entirely made up of workforce housing or elderly housing. B, new residential uses within the district overlay do not exceed a four-point, a four-to-one ratio of residential to non-residential use measured by constructed floor space. So, we eliminated, that's the part that, now thinking back on it, it's a little troubling, so. And I wanted to have this discussion with you guys because, say for instance, because there is no more requirement for four-to-one residential to, to commercial, or to non-residential, residential to non-residential. So essentially, somebody can come in, in the village overlay district, in a vacant lot and put nothing but residential in. So essentially, somebody can come in, in the village overlay district, in a vacant lot, and put nothing but residential in, and there's nothing that the town can do. Am I wrong? Am I off here?
I don't agree with you that there's nothing the town can do, because we do have section 0.4, and we...
Which one?
This, well, I have two, I have the original one, the village overlay district.
Which doesn't exist anymore.
Which doesn't, and then I have the new one that was passed out on January 3rd.
First floor residential is still a conditional use.
Yeah.
And it says, I think...
With options, right.
So can you deny a first floor?
I really would need to see it, and I'm sorry, I didn't come here for the discussion, so I didn't, my hobby is separate, and I didn't bring it tonight.
I know I'm bringing this up at the 11th hour, my issue isn't necessarily having residential on the first floor. I know that from many of the charrettes that we had, initially, we said, oh, every residential's gotta be up on top, but, you know, we have, you know, what bothers me there is there's no more ratio of residential to non-residential.
I can speak to that, because we talked about this extensively, and I know there was a lot of concern. But I think what people ended up, like, agreeing on, and why the language, as I believe my memory serves me right, there are no restrictions, is that there needs to be a certain amount of residential density in that area before any commercial can really move in and find a customer base. You kind of need to have, you need to have some amount of residential first, and then the commercial will come. That's usually the way that, you know, kind of thriving downtowns work. So, I think that the thought was, is that not to place too many restrictions initially on what might happen across the street. And you have two, you know, usually two opportunities, you know, in June and then in November, to make changes. And I think the way that the discussion went was, in the end, I think it was decided that letting it go organically and see what happens, because no one really knows, we don't have any crystal balls here. And then, if it feels like there is, like, an imbalance, or if the town decides that they do want to put more restrictive language in there, there was time to do that. Because I think, when you think about developing that area, I think you're looking at a span of years. Particularly, you know, because there's those three buildings that need to be repurposed, that are there already. And my guess is, is those will be looked at first, because they exist. And I, you know, I don't think anyone's gonna necessarily want to dive right in there and build, like, an apartment building right away. I think probably those buildings will get, you know, fitted out, and their exteriors spruced up, made to look more attractive, and get them ready for, you know, for future tenants, and then that's when you're going to start seeing some movement. My guess would be that there would be some, you know, shops, or, you know, maybe a restaurant or something might go in the bottom floor of one of those buildings, and maybe the top floors might be, if there is a top floor, there might be some fitting out for apartments up there, maybe not, though. It might be simpler not to do that. Watching over a span of years, like what happened with Bitterford is, they went residential first, but only because there already had been a lot of people just kind of using those mill buildings for, you know, trade, and for, you know, there was, there were people like, there was a bunch of carpenters in there building things. I think there was a metalsmith in there for a while, there was a lot of things going on there. And then the residential, they actually started, when they started to really redevelop the mill buildings, that's when the residential came. I think in this, but you have to remember, Bitterford's already a downtown, too, there's already, it's pretty dense. I think here, where you're reinventing everything across the street, I think it might work where you might, like, see those buildings have some residential, and maybe a mix of small shops and trades.
But what is to guarantee that that would happen?
We'd have to change.
There's no guarantee.
Can I give it a shot? So, going through the last two years of all the thinking that a lot of, envisioned Berwick, the planning board, the selectmen, a lot of people in town have been chiming in on, everything we've done in this village overlay is based on an updated comprehensive plan. And we have a whole list of things that envisioned Berwick, the action items, you know, included in the comprehensive plan, and that, it was voted on and approved. So we have a concept, which, you worked very hard on this, Kathy, the form-based code. And I think it says in here, all first floor residential uses in buildings with frontage on the new main street shall be, this is just one of the things also, reviewed by the planning board as a conditional use, and is consistent with the terms of the comprehensive plan. So we have, I think like you said, we have a lot of thinking to do about everything that comes before us to make sure it conforms with what we want, so we do have a lot of, you know, I think because it is a form-based code, we can deal with things as they come, as long as it conforms to what we want for downtown.
Is the concern that there's gonna be too many apartment houses?
What if a developer comes through, and the existing buildings get made commercial, but then the rest of it is all residential? We have 200 residential, 300 residential units downtown, it's all residential, top, second, third floor, 45 feet in height, row houses, duplexes. What, we can't, I'm not confident in saying our outdated comp plan and our downtown vision report has enough teeth. I don't think it does.
Also, if you look at the master plan, not, unless my definition of frontage of Main Street is wrong, it didn't look like that many buildings were on Main Street. And I just thought of this, but you might, I mean, if they can avoid doing a conditional use, they might place the buildings away from the Main Street for that reason.
Yeah, and that specifically says on the new Main Street will, if the new Main Street doesn't go in for a while.
There's a few other little paragraphs.
And they start putting buildings elsewhere, like Dave said. What do we have to say that we don't have, you know, that there's no control over the residential versus non-residential?
Let me ask Kathy this, form-based code, when someone comes in to a district that we have, like, in our village overlay here, it's new to us, we've never gone through, you know, with a developer on what you do, but it's usually, the way I've heard about it for the last couple of years, is that you're working with the developer. It's not an adversarial situation, and you're working towards a goal, they know what they're getting into. And we do want some residential, but we want commercial as well. And we just learned that this first floor thing with, you know, no residential at all, sometimes it doesn't work, the banks won't give money on it. You know, so, I mean, I always had the hope that we did have the teeth that we need.
But there's nothing in 6.4 that says...
You will.
That you will put commercial in here as well.
So, but what's stopping us just from changing it and making an amendment to it? If we, if, like Kathy said, it's gonna take years to develop that, so nobody's, we're not gonna get 10 apartment buildings coming before us in six months, or next year. So what if we, so what if it starts to get too much residential, or we're seeing a trend, or we're, you know, and we then anticipate and put it back in?
I get what you're saying, but can we put this one, this one part back in here? New residential uses within the district overlay do not exceed a 4 to 1 ratio of residential to non-residential use measured by constructed floor space. That means that any new construction has to have a 4 to 1 ratio. So if you build 40,000 square feet of apartments, you have to have at least 10,000 square feet of storefronts. That's the assurance.
Yeah, but that's true. The only thing I would caution about is, like, would it really be that bad to have an apartment building first?
Yeah.
I don't think it would, I think that would be a really good start, actually, to have an apartment building, which would have no commercial on the first floor.
Would you just say just floor space in general should have the 4 to 1 ratio, and not worry about, not worry about new construction? You do have 4 to 1 ratio, and he's starting with a lot, because his plans to do the existing buildings would be all commercial.
Yeah.
So that'd give him, that'd give him a lot of room to work with.
We've talked about that, like dividing it up, dividing the district up into little sections, and saying, this section has to have, you know, so much commercial, so much residential. And so whether it's, you know, two apartment buildings, and then an office building, or however, but each individual section. I think you brought that up, actually, a while ago.
Like, the vacant parking lot in the Blue Height building, I could see not having that 4 to 1 requirement. But I think, in, right across the street here, in that, you know, that whatever shape it is, seven acres, there needs to be some assurances there that there's not gonna be row houses going up, because, you know, we know that we want mixed use. We want commercial, we want residential as well.
You're right, but you have three existing buildings right now that we know will not be residential.
Pretty sure.
Totally residential.
We also, you know, going through the charrettes and the workforce housing charrette in particular, we did, that's where we really identified that sometimes you have to have a full building of residential for it to be developable, for the developer to be able to, for it to be affordable to be developed, otherwise, you're limiting the affordability of developability.
I think, if we had the 4 to 1 in there, okay, all right, let's say that 20,000 square feet of, I don't know how big those buildings are, 20,000 square feet of commercial, guy's got that, he has the 4 to 1, he's like, now I can put 80,000 square feet of residential in here, so I can build my apartment building now and have 80,000 square feet. I would be fine with that, but there's no...
You're worried about the timing.
You know, and now I've got my 4 to 1, but now if I want to put in another, you know, six apartments over here, 1,000 square feet each, I have to come up with more commercial.
So you're talking about by lot, not necessarily by building, that's what, I think that's the, I wouldn't want to limit it by the building, because you're limiting the developability of the parcel.
Yes, I mean, especially as we've said, you don't, you can have residential on the first floor, so you can't, if, it would be a no-brainer if we said, no, you have to have commercial on the first floor, so then, there you go, bam, there it is.
Yeah.
But we're afraid that's gonna stymie development.
Yeah.
Because you're pigeonholing it.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't at first, if you did the 4 to 1 ratio, if you got rid of the new part, because it's a lot more than 20,000 square feet right here of space, I think that's a lot. You consider the concrete building, the L-shaped building, the office building.
But it would be easier to have that in place, and then have a developer come in and ask us to maybe let them do something different than to not have it in place.
Because we can always scale back that three, that 4 to 1, because if...
Like Kathy said, if they want to come in and do a residential right away, an apartment building, that's great, but they put in a big apartment building, and then are we scrambling afterward to put the 4 to 1 ratio back in place? I just, I feel like we'd be chasing...
Yes.
Yeah, what we're afraid of is that everybody's gonna come in and put residential in.
Right.
Worst case is, somebody buys a 7.7 acres, and they put in, let's see, that's roughly eight times 40,000 square feet, at 10, you know, they start putting single-family residences downtown Berwick, which we don't want there, you know.
I don't think that's the worst case, I think the worst case is, we limit the development so much by our land use that nobody buys it, nobody develops it, and we're sitting in there looking at it for 10 more years.
I agree with you.
Count the house lots, yeah, well, that's, that's a nightmare, Nicole, because when you count the number of lots, single-family homes, you could put right there, which would totally negate any commercial or light industry, and you multiply that by $65,000 per lot, there's a lot of money there.
Oh, yeah, tons.
Yeah, and we don't want, that's not what we want.
And the other issue, too, is by having, is by opening this up to so much residential. I'm not gonna say 200, I'm gonna say 250, let's say 250 units times one and a half people. Let's say an additional 400 people that could potentially be living on seven acres right downtown. We have a traffic nightmare that is going to get worse. It's not bad now.
I agree with you.
It's not bad now, but we don't have a traffic plan, we have still no, no concrete way to handle traffic, to handle an additional 200, 300 cars at peak hours.
We haven't started yet, Dave, I mean, we don't have the Main Street yet, we don't have the party.
I can speak on the traffic, for, we have about a $65,000 traffic study project that is funded. We have commitments from Maine DOT and CACS.
I know, and there's all that discussion about it, but until I see one, until I see one says, downtown Berwick, the way that it's set up right now with the roads can only handle this much, there's just, all I'm saying is, what I would like to put back in, and I can make a motion, we can second it, we can, that's what I probably should have done, so we could discuss it, and then we can vote on it, either way, is that 4 to 1 ratio. That's the only thing, we could always, like Sean said, go back on it, and then pull back on it. I want a developer to come in here and tell me, I can't build anything over there, because your land use ordinance is too strict, I need you to remove that 4 to 1 ratio, because I can't, I can't build anything.
Do you think a developer's gonna want to wait? I mean, you're talking about potential six-month wait on developing, just to see if it passes. I don't think you're gonna get a developer in here doing it. I totally understand what you're saying, and I don't want that either over there, I also, I'm against limiting the development at this point, unless, unless we're gonna go through and divide it up, or put it on each lot, and really look into it.
I would want a lot of thought by people like Kathy, before we change anything.
Right, yeah.
That will not stay the same, it cannot, because the lot lines go through buildings.
Right, right.
So, Mr. Kahia, or whomever, needs to come to you with a subdivision plan, first and foremost. And anybody who's looking at that and wants to maximize their profit, you know, just looking at it like a developer would, the first thing they're gonna say is, oh my gosh, I need more road frontage. So that means he's gonna have to create a road, in order to get the road frontage, so that he can split the lots out and maximize the potential. So, you will, that will be the first thing that happens. I just can't imagine how else it would happen, just simply because of the way that it was divided up, which looks kind of crazy when you look at it, that, you know, boundary lines are going right through buildings, but they did that because of the brownfield grants, so it has to be revised.
But with the ratio, let's say, there's a, Sean, how much square foot did you think are in the buildings? Like 100,000 square feet?
I have no idea.
No idea.
There's a, there's a... Which building?
All of them.
All three together.
So if there's a 4 to 1 ratio, that's 400,000 square feet of residential, that's not a lot, I mean, isn't that, that's not limiting them.
That's 400,000 square foot units right there, really.
Yeah, so it's more like a 3 to 1, I mean, we have to nail down what a ratio would actually...
Right, I wouldn't want to blindly throw out a ratio.
I'm not totally comfortable with the 4 to 1 ratio either.
I don't think it would do anything, right?
I'm not sure where that came from.
Are we in a panic mode for really, I mean, we started out, like, take, you know, we took the 4 to 1 out after some thought.
But the 4 to 1 was for, but the 4 to 1 was for new construction, so it actually did something.
But it's arbitrary, James, I don't know why 4 to 1 was ever picked.
It's because, it's the concern about residential dominating the downtown.
Well, I understand that general consensus, but I don't understand why 4 to 1 was the magic ratio.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think...
It was arbitrary.
Yeah, I, maybe it was, and I don't know.
You know, you just sit back and you start thinking about it. But I mean, this was all, this is all new, I mean, but it's still, we still have a lot of control through the conditional use process, which we added in, so that we, it would have to pass muster with our comprehensive plan.
Right, it has to meet those guidelines there, those performance standards, and it's still a conditional use.
So we could say, you got too much residential, not enough of this, but...
And you have, you have a six-month cycle by which you can change regulations.
Yeah, but until we...
So, you would have plenty of time to change them.
Until we start going down the road, and we get a Main Street, and we start, I agree with you, we're gonna learn fast, and we're gonna have to, when that starts rolling, and, you know, we may in six months have to go back in here and mess around with this, because this is new to us.
Look at how we, look at what we did in R2 with no apartment buildings there, I mean, we saw something happening, we stopped it.
Yeah.
Boom.
I think that 4 point, I think, I keep saying 4 point, I think 4 to 1 is probably too large, I mean, maybe 2 and 1/2 to 1, I think it would be, I think, you know, I think that would be better.
I would like to see some kind of data that supports any of it, like, rather than, you know, a bunch of people sitting there pulling numbers that we don't know.
I think what we were talking about is, it can wait until November to get it in, so we have all that time.
Let's make that a topic of discussion, then.
Yeah.
And then, you know, you gonna be with us for another... And then, you know, are you going to be with us for another year or two, or?
Um, no.
No, you know-
Oh, God.
Actually, I have an announcement, actually.
Oh, I'm not, actually, I'm not done yet.
Okay. We're not ready for your announcements.
I apologize, I'm not done yet. You know, if we let this one slide through June, we have the whole summer, the property's going to be handed back over, we have a developer who, we have a property owner who's, who's done several renderings of plans and he's gone back and forth of what he would like to have there. The last set of plans came up with, with over 200 residential units. I know that they got a lot of people spooked in town. I'm not reactive to how people react to things, but I did my homework, you know, and I'm just thinking about this, and I've always wanted to make sure the town is going to be protected and to not, to trust but verify, and I understand that he owns the property, he wants to turn a profit, and he's going to do what he can to make that, that way. But we get something that comes in here in, let's say, July, and we don't have any assurances in there, what's to, what's to stop, you know, six new apartment buildings going in there? And then, that's it. That's it.
I can say one thing, probably money, Dave, would, will stop it. It's, it's going to be extremely expensive to build a road. We're talking many millions of dollars to develop that, the way that Mark Kahia has shown you in the, those master plans he's come up with, many millions of dollars.
Is what we're afraid of is that we have yet to see firm plans for the inside of the three buildings, actual C, real plans for those, you know, what's going to be-
That's not what I'm scared about, because I know it's probably going to go in there. I would think it would be some type of light use, some type of commercial. I don't think it would be necessarily used for, I don't think it would necessarily be used for residential. My concern is that the downtown that everybody envisions of having, you know, like a Central Avenue in Dover where you've got some storefronts, you've got some residential above that, the downtown that we've all dreamed about.
Like the center of South Berwick, I think is what people-
Like the center of South Berwick.
That's what people, I think, are visualizing.
It won't be there. It won't be there, because anybody can come in here and say, "Well, you know what? I'm going to build out those existing buildings and I'm going to, and now I'm going to build out a road, I'm going to put a couple buildings in here. If I come back to it..." What if the economy takes another downturn?
So what you're saying is-
What if?
If, if one developer comes in tomorrow and he says, "I want to put in 150 residential units, one-two bedroom, couple three bedrooms."
And what I'm going to do with the white buildings is I'm going to repurpose them commercial and then I'm done. I'm going back to Jupiter, Florida.
And then another developer comes in next week.
Is there enough parking down there?
And he says, "I want to put in 150 residential units." My question, do you think using a comprehensive plan in 6.4, we can actually say, "You've got to wait with that second application for another set of 150 residential?" What, I mean, this is like, it's a test bed. This needs a test bed.
It is a test bed.
And we're going to be changing, my guess is, we're going to be changing, changing this every year, every six months for the next five years.
Not unlike what you've been doing with your regular ordinance, too.
Yeah, I mean-
But that's why I'm bringing that up now, because we have an opportunity to change this going into the June, the town meeting, that, so, just to have the assurance, it's the only thing that I'm asking.
Well, I guess, another question is, do we end up, you know, if we do it that way, are we going to end up changing it as a reaction to whatever's being built over there? So we get a building that we don't really, nobody really wants, and now we have to change it. So the next building doesn't end up like the building that we just, somebody just put up that nobody really wanted? You know what I'm saying? Like that, like when we changed the R2, that was, you know, those apartments already went up, they're there, now we've changed it in reaction to that, and there's something there that a lot of, you know, residents don't really care for.
Five residents don't really care for.
They're residents.
I agree, I think parking might be a factor with this.
So are we going to, you know, do we end up being reactionary instead of being proactive?
If we don't have the infrastructure to handle X number of new residential units, isn't that enough for us to say, "You've got to wait"? I mean, we-
Well, if they can't put it up, they're not going to want to put it up. I mean, a developer is out to make money, not to build buildings where there's no roads, no access. The other thing is that-
And no customers.
Look at the, yeah, well, exactly. Look at the parking requirements. For commercial, there's no onsite or off-street parking required. For residential, there is, and it has to be screened, and it has to be located behind the building. I think we have enough, I feel, unless we can find some kind of, something that's in action already, being used in some other town, where, where we see it in use and say, "With a ratio that's limiting and this is working and thriving," I'm not comfortable with pulling, just pulling numbers out and saying, "Okay, this is what, and this is a limit that we're putting on it."
Then it takes us six months to change it back.
Right, and then we're further delaying, yeah. And I, and I agree, so, I mean, I could see all sides of it. I just, I'm not, I'm not well-versed enough on all of this and ratios and development to, to make a decision like that that's going to limit developability when people want to see stuff happening.
I'll look into it. Dave also mentioned having it be wavable or have it be able to scale it back.
I mean, I don't think I said wave.
No, wavable, but be able to scale it back.
And then under what, like-
Scale it back.
Yeah, so, and then, I mean, then we would have to discuss, like, you know, what would make us scale it back then.
We have to do our homework.
Yeah, we have a lot of homework to do, but-
Let's say they put in-
Good point.
They put in a building, you would, you would put in a building, if you put 40,000 square feet of residential, you would be required to put 10,000 square feet of commercial.
That's a two and a half to one.
That's a four-to-one. That's a four-to-one. If you put 40,000 residential, okay?
40,000 square feet.
You wanted to do 40,000 square feet of residential in a building. I'm just using a nice round number. You would be required to put in 10,000 square feet of commercial. If you did a five-to-one, it would be less. It would be like 8,000.
You might want to like, give him, if he wants to do a larger-scale apartment building, you might just want to, like, be able to say, like, "Yeah, you can do this apartment building and minutes ratio from there." An integration that makes sense, that's, I don't know, communities do it.
And does it have to be in the building or next door to it?
Well, that's it. I mean, then you're talking about-
I think we need, I think we need to have a serious discussion about this when your planner has had time to, to do some homework herself, or-
All right, so, I could see that, listen, I just wanted to bring this up. I could see that the consensus is not there to even get this, my feeling is I'd like to have something in there. I could see by the consensus of the board that, that wouldn't even, probably be seconded and passed. So, my first, I think after-
But it's a good conversation to have.
I think this immediately, we immediately have to go back to this and have some good conversation on that. It really has to be ironed out, because we could, we just have to ensure that it does.
I think we're going into a panic mode and maybe it's too early for us.
I'm going into a panic mode, you're not.
Yeah, I don't know.
Right, well, is it, why, I know why.
You know, I actually had the thought of the number of square feet that are out there and 7.7 acres along with the other acres, the other acres.
You know, I think five-to-one might be a good ratio, I don't know, 50,000 square feet to 10,000, I don't know. I don't know. Maybe in Boston and New York, that would be good, but maybe not, I don't know what other smaller towns that are trying to develop their downtown would use. And you would, you know, we would know from like Saco and Bitterford what, some of their requirements.
They're bigger than we are, too, though. They're not small towns.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're definitely bigger.
The problem is, is everybody that we're going to look at already has an established downtown.
That was the town that just went there.
That's our problem, because we don't have anything.
We wipe the slate clean on 12 acres.
We're starting with a blank slate here, you know?
Didn't they just do something similar to this? Didn't you say that, David?
No, they did contract zoning.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, we don't want to talk about that.
No, 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 let's not confuse everybody. One thing that's really helped me with not panicking and being reactive is staying off Facebook.
No, you know, and I haven't seen anything. I haven't seen anything for months, but-
I haven't either, because I'm not looking at it.
I don't, I don't, you know me, I do not react to that.
No, I know you don't, I know you don't.
But, you know, I have got many unsolicited comments from people in town that make sense, that are well-educated and that make sense. And I know that there's a small, you know, group of citizens that are just concerned. And I just, I think that we got to readdress that, because I know the last plan that came through, even though it was four months ago, five months ago, it really kind of freaked people out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't seen a master plan from Jupiter that has really done much for me anyway.
Yeah, but that, they're just conceptual.
Yeah, I understand that, but I haven't, I've yet to see one. I've seen two and neither one has been fantastic, but I think.
The first thing we have to think about is where we were four years ago.
Neither one of them works with the Form-Based Code either.
Yeah.
I just want to speak, the last thing I'll say is that as Invisiberg Chair and as someone that's been on the DVC Committee and as a planning tech for a year and a half, I second what Dave's train of thought 100%. I think it is, I think it's important to address. But like what Nicole was saying, the number should be logically deduced and not pulled out of thin air.
And I think that just having this discussion and having it recorded shows that we are all on the same page. We just want to make the best decision about it. I think that, I really think that we are all on the same page about it. We just, it's just about how we go about doing-
You guys are less hasty than I am, because I would have been like, "No, I want it in there now," but I knew that it wasn't going to go anywhere, so that's why I didn't even bring it to a vote, so.
And that's why we have a bunch of us sitting here at this table.
I could just, you know, picture Niles at home right now watching us. Niles is a little, Niles is a little under the weather this evening, so I would like to say, "Niles, we wish you well." And I hope that you're not-
Hopefully we haven't pushed him over the edge.
So Kathy, we're going to keep cutting you off, because we don't want you to give us bad news.
Right, so what else? What other informational items do we have?
Can we adjourn before she says anything?
Yeah, I am separating from SMPD-C at the end of this month. I'm taking a temporary position with the Town of Kittery, whom I've been assisting for a while now. They still are lacking two staff and they're a very busy community. And then, after that five or six-month position is over, because it's definitely temporary, my husband and I are going to travel for about a year, and then I'll be back looking for a job.
Good for you.
Oh, well, so by the time you're back-
Great timing.
Maybe we'll have something built across the street.
Great timing, yeah.
Is this why?
This is my last meeting with you.
Oh.
And I've really enjoyed working with you. It's been a lot of fun. I mean, I never imagined that I'd be stepping into a position where I'd be like writing any kind of Form-Based Code and, "Look what we did." So, yeah, I'll be, I'll be watching from the sidelines, cheering you on.
We'll have your cell phone anyway, right?
I will have.
Yeah. She's going to change that number.
Let's call Kathy.
Well, I'd like to thank you. I know that before I even met you and when we found out that we were losing the town